No funny stories.
No funny stuff. On our best behavior, gentlemen. Best behavior.
I'm talking to you there.
You know, it's not really funny to somebody. It's my philosophy.
All right, you are live.
Okay. We'll wait a second till we get to our. Oh, my gosh. This could be the first non-monitored meeting. There's no Grand Leader representative. He's probably upset that D Y D did not make the big 14.
Good morning.
Yeah.
Say good morning.
What's getting in my box?
I was the other people.
He's talking about that matter of the Texas law.
I was watching the big championship game. That stadium was empty. There was nobody there.
Did you watch the 49ers game last night?
No. Did he get in? How'd he play?
Just for that level, good. Not that bad, but the teams were last night. Did you watch that?
I didn't want to be in the building. I was traveling and when I got home, I just went by the bed. I was so tired.
Dude's still upset.
Yeah, I might have cried a little bit. I cried in my bed. In a dark closet. For the Nick, yeah. Yeah, I'm not because we're flying out. They were flying out this hand, so. So I'm not going to get to go. But that would be another one.
You got a star yet this year?
We ready to start? All right. I call this meeting of the Young County Commissioners Court to order. Let the record show it is nine thirty, nine thirty AM. All five members of the court are present. We are streaming live on our YouTube channel and if you're watching and you'd like to call in and make a comment, please call nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. If you're able, please stand for an invitation or pledge. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion and grant us wisdom. Please fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Young County and continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the service of our community. Please bless Stacy Rogers as this is his last meeting. Help him feel the gratitude that this county feels for the work that he's done for us and help him as he starts his next chapter of his life with these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm off the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to lead Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And also praying for him to pray as he takes on his new adventure.
I mean, he's got weeks, but we have to worry about that.
Yeah.
Weeks.
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 Short weeks.
All right, then we'll be praying for precinct three when he saw that. That's the prayer.
He helped spend it. He's loved Scott now.
All right, let's move to item number three, public comments. Are there any public comments today, Tom?
Just wanted to use, I signed in for two topics, but I'll try to keep it brief. First was just an update on the courthouse. That our restorative work has been completed. All the loose material's been removed, so that west entrance is now open and is safe for people for ingress egress to get to the tag office and the precinct courthouse. So we're, the building is officially reopened, one hundred percent.
And the front door is operational now?
Yes, sir.
That's right.
So that's, that's all there. The next phase of that will not begin until January the sixth. They'll be back to begin doing restoration. We're still assembling bids on, well, actually quotations, not bids. Quotations on the replacement material. If you get a chance, or I can send you some photos. They had to remove quite a bit more material than what we'd originally anticipated. It's one of those things. It's an old building. We know that we're getting into our rat's nest, so we'll figure out what's better. But it's all good. We've got a plan. It's moving forward. We've got some really good vendors that are nationally known and they do a great job. So we feel very confident in that moving forward. So that's good. In the meantime, between now and January sixth, we'll also have H V A C focusing on laying out H V A C with a hard eye at this point. We're still looking for a contractor to do a ceiling removal and replacement while we're doing this on what is currently occupied by probation. That's got an old sheet rock ceiling that has failed due to weather and other things and it should be installed incorrectly. And so to balance the building and not need some additional H V A C balancing equipment, we're going to go with uniformed ceiling heights in both sides of that building. And then that way we don't have to get into balances. We're going to set that up so it'll be two zones and they can independently operate those, but also they'll fill that center hallway and we won't need any of additional mechanical balancing done because we'll have concentric volume, volumes will be consistent. So that's, that's getting started as well between now and the sixth. Any questions on that?
No, that's exciting. Do you have any questions?
Okay, second item. In looking at all of this and knowing that only P D is going to be vacating their particular space that's in the east section of that building. We've been in conversations with probation about them potentially moving into that space. We're going to take a hard look. Quite frankly, we've not done an assessment of the space that's there because the P D's in and entrenched in that area. Once they vacate, we'll look at that to see what we have. But there's conversations about using, because that space has multiple entrances and exits, because we have adult and juvenile probation using separate entrances, so we don't have co-mingling of inventory. Let's just call. So we're looking at maybe using a, making a much better use of that space for all of the county services and government services that are in there. I say all that to come back with, we'd also like to see if the county would be willing to put additional services in there, specifically Y C A D and anybody else that from this side that may want to go over there. I know there's been concern of volume of traffic in that, in that space. I'd like to just put it on the table. Could we look at maybe cross-training some people and using twin budgets, putting in the one person, which would give us services on both sides of the county that may help offset some of that, what we'll call downtown that some people think we're experiencing at that point, but give us dual services in that, in that location.
So Y C A D, like putting an appraiser over there or?
Just tax collection and answers, scheduling in, more of a clerical. What I'm, what I'm, what I think and what I've heard from folks is if there's a place to begin the process before they come down here, some of those questions are pretty rudimentary.
Have you talked to Jesse at all about that? Because he, they're completely independent from us. They all, they have a board that we have one member on that board.
I understand, but you're, you're my primary renter. So at this point, I just, as we go forward, if we can do something with this, we're going to look at all options to see what we can do in going into that space with services that will help all of Young County.
Yeah, that would actually be nice to have a place where people can pay their taxes over there.
There's a lot of synergy that could take place in that location and give good service for everybody and then offload some of that, the cost of doing that. And we're willing to step in and help that space get constructed the way that they need it to happen.
Okay. All right, that's something to think about.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that'd be, yeah, you're right. You wouldn't even have to be there to be around. I mean, it's really, there's like a three-month period where people pay their taxes.
So there's, just looking at all options for what we can do to add services and make it simpler and easier for the organizations and the individuals to make this, this space work as a community space. We're talking to D P S. I already know if the S L wants to go in there. There's, there's going to be some, D P S reached out to us. They may want a satellite office in there as well. So if this can become a, a building that has better or more, more access, not necessarily better, it's not going to change a whole lot. But we've also got the second floor. We haven't got into that space as well. So long-term, that, that could be something there. But on this, and looking at all of this space and the services that would, could be utilized in that, in that end of the county, it's just, it makes sense if we can get it, get it to work. So I am going to, here's my next stop, actually.
Okay. That's great.
Any questions on that?
Thank you. Yes, Eric, here he is.
Goodness, just wanted to come over to the city and just wish Commissioners Court and all the county Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. We had a fantastic Christmas parade. I just want to thank the county and the county staff for all their cooperation and getting everything cleared out. I've heard, I don't know if y'all heard it, but I've heard nothing but positive comments.
I do. I mean, it was great. I really enjoyed myself.
It was, it was absolutely fantastic. Along those lines, I've heard a little bit, the tree trimming, we tried to get done and you can never do that perfect and keep everybody satisfied and I get that.
What complaints have you got?
Just, why did you touch this tree?
Oh, my God. I, I've heard nothing. I have heard nothing wild. Yeah, but no, I, I think it's wonderful.
Overall, thank y'all very much. I did, I'll come back with a formal report probably after the first year, but I did want to mention the Randy Rogers concert. We got everything done. I want to give thanks publicly to Commissioner Wiley and Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Rogers, I've heard that he's leaving, but he probably has a second career in the state and you wouldn't believe how hard. They worked so hard. Thanks to the Sheriff's Office, we couldn't have got it done and gotten everything turned over without the prisoners. The concert itself, as far as the event, was a fantastic success. But along that, I did want to highlight a problem in case you hear about it. Commissioner Wiley was working with our contractor. We found a safety issue with the gas lines over there and it's something that we needed to correct. There's an arena board meeting this week. We think we can do it within the existing budget, but there will be some expense associated with that. The main thing I wanted y'all to know was Commissioner Wiley, Commissioner Rogers reported, they jumped out on it. They resolved the safety issue so that we were able to hold the concert safely and then they're mitigating the other problems. So just wanted to give you an update. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Any other public comments? Again, I want to point out that we're afterwards going to have some donuts to celebrate Commissioner Rogers and thank you for, for the service that you've given Young County. We appreciate you. We'll move to the Tax Assessor Collector November Activity Report. So far in 2024, they've brought in $303,000 compared to $336,000 this time last year. We received a hotel occupancy tax report, a hot, hot report for $50 for September and $37.35 for October 2024 from the old homestead. Another thing I just wanted to point out to, to the court. We did a tax abatement for the Young Wind LLC. Last year, we had a very challenging time collecting that from them. Our, our tax abatement payment is due in December. The other entities in only, only ISD and only hospital, they don't get theirs until January, but we had to really fight to get that payment. We did receive this year's payment already and it was $918,000, $918,160. Now, that's, it's not a windfall. That was in our budget, so it's respected, but I just want to report that we did receive it. We're going to wait, in January, we should have a pile of payment from the hydrogen plant. I have not heard a peep from them since we renegotiated the tax abatement schedule with them. So fingers crossed that that comes in. All right, any other public comments before we move on? We'll move to item number four, which is consider the county clerk meeting minutes from the previous meeting, which was November 25th, 2024. We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley and a second from Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor of approving the minutes? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
So what do you approve?
All right, let's move to item number five, Consider the Treasurer's Financial Reports and Updates on Securities Pledge. Treasurer, my name?
No.
Your report. Let's move to the Auditor's Budget Amendments and Vouchers Payable. Ms. Roberts always has a report.
Might not be with you here. So we're only paying F Y twenty-five invoices now. The total today is $283,346.21 and out of the general fund is $173,446.43.
And that's off the new?
This is all F Y twenty-five.
We have a motion to approve.
So move.
There is a demand for you to make.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell and a second from Commissioner Shook. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes four zero one with Commissioner Wiley abstaining.
Also, I wanted to mention, we're not having, not having the last commissioners over the month. We're going to have vouchers ready on Thursday, December 19th in the afternoon. If y'all would please come by and just initial only one in our office and then we will run those after everyone's mission.
That'd be really, really helpful so that we can get the bills paid. We're going to not have that last meeting.
Good time to buy something. You don't want to lose them.
We're going to bring it up.
Not, but I know when it'll be next year.
It'll all come up in the January meeting, so. All right, what else you got? Well, the first one's a cyber security. Ms. Marsha? Yeah, she's on the main stage.
Okay, now if everyone knows, this is a hot topic this day. We did, we have had a couple of counties in the state that spent in for all over a million dollars in rent. They had a lot going on. We had a little incident back in the day, but it wasn't.
We had a scare.
We escaped it, everything is good. But at this time, I request that we have an opportunity to raise the money. We will cover it. It may be your packet, the cyber package, the dissolving group pack and very closely with the last. It was during A M. I did have gotten kind of a quote from your December budget. So it's not, I did budget something.
We had, we did have.
We had a, some bad.
I'll talk about the insurance.
What's the difference?
And we had to pay $10,000.
We had to pay, well, it was a dozen, every $12,000. I paid it out of the computer budget. But we need to hedge our business a little.
So there's. Yeah, there's two proposed insurance policies we can pitch. We can purchase. One has a million dollars' worth of coverage. The other has a half a million dollars' worth of coverage. What's the premiums on the two?
Okay, for the half a billion, it's $5,000. For a million, it's $7,500. Now, that's getting an extra half a million dollars for $2,500.
And didn't you tell me that most of the counties that have had to claim on this have been over $500,000 when they've made their complaint?
Yes. And truthfully, we, they hit the small ones, the rural counties, just as hard as they get. They, they lay in wait. You wait till we have something big going on and they're watching. The boots, once they get in, they, they, they work in.
Now, the deductible is higher on the $500,000. It's $5,000.
Right.
The million, it's $10,000. But like Marsha said, we've already, we spent, had to spend $12,000 in the other day.
Right.
My opinion on it is for $2,500, we ought to give the extra, extra $500,000 of coverage. I do think we need it with as many people as we have on our computers. As many, as many trolling emails as we did.
We've implemented the multi-factor already. We've done everything we're saying up today on our cybersecurity courses where the new employees come in. Once I get their email set up, Harley sets the other part in motion and we're trying to get everybody trained immediately. It's going to be on computers. But it's just so easy the way they do this.
John still is in his computer.
Oh, one of them, we had an investigator doing a problem of cause affidavit and went in on a state side that had been sitting there, the hackers or the mowers had gone in and been sitting there for a long time. He was looking up for a probable cause stuff and caught it, but we caught it. Homeland Security called me within 30 minutes of him opening. I was at College Station and I immediately called TAC and we got right up and we got things shut down. And, you know, we were very, very lucky. Because it was an international group that caught us.
Any questions? I'll make a motion that we purchase the million-dollar cybersecurity insurance policy. The second from Commissioner Wiley. Is there any discussion on that? This is something we've never done before.
Now, all of that, that's just on our policy. That's our auto.
That's our other stuff. I've just looked at.
The only thing different, one I gave you is one of has been cyber.
This is the cyber page. That's all of the different things.
I just never saw it on here. I was working through. Where, where is it?
I can make everybody a copy of this once they get their work in on our copy.
Oh, that's it right there? Okay.
I just want this to be.
Yeah, okay. That's the only thing different in that.
Basically, what we're asking is this be added to our umbrella of coverage, you know, for our other, the other stuff we have. I budgeted many of the outside chance that this was going to come available to us.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Motion passes five zero to purchase the million-dollar policy. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Yes, we will have paperwork. Opioids, sir.
Opioids. So this is the opioid settlement that I think we've already got some money on. They have a resolution on file. They had some, we want, this is the predator opioid. And how much did this?
We got, we got a walking $3,322.92.
We have to accept that if we want that $3,000.
Our alternative is that we could file a lawsuit that would cost us millions of dollars. It was a wise decision. I'll accept the motion. Second? Second from Commissioner Shook. All in favor to accept the settlement? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. What is that?
This is the opioid.
I'll, we'll do this after.
They're looking at $83 million for a code.
Really? That's not a lot.
No, but up here is, I don't know, Amerisource, Bergen, Arco Bell and McKesson, $1,421 million.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's like 15 of these places that are, that are in these lawsuits.
Walmart, CBS, Walgreens, Peabody.
Also, I have one more thing on here.
Yes.
We've had a problem come up this week. We had three heaters on our water system, water heaters. One of them is brand new. Number one's brand new. Number two is doing okay, but number three is about to kick the bucket. We got a proposal from James Lane. Jimmy, you've got a copy of that, didn't you? To repair, and that's just disconnect, remove the changer part.
Can he be changed?
It's $9,400. To replace is $24,431.24. It, it's, I don't know, it's.
I would replace it if you liked.
I, I didn't want to do it without y'all's advice on that.
The way that, the way those heaters work, all three of them talk to each other. Yeah, they're going together. The first one comes on. If it satisfies it, the second one comes on, or if one's down, two comes on and three, three backs up.
And three related to back up.
Does anyone have a, does anyone oppose to replacing?
No, I think, what was it, two years ago we went in and we replaced that one.
Number one.
And then we did some repairs on third at that point. And I think we replaced that then.
We didn't replace that whole.
No.
No, we didn't replace no unit. I just thought we'd replace the parts that were.
I don't know, one and two.
We'd optimize it.
The insulation, I mean, matter had repaired quite often and I think we're probably going to have to do that on even one and two now. But I haven't gotten a assessment on that.
We need to talk to them about doing some kind of a maintenance program. So we can get, those kind of heaters, they're very, they get flushed so, every so often.
Well, they're maintenance built. Yeah, do this, do they have a service thing? I know, I know, like some of the local places are starting to do those maintenance programs.
I know Carrier used to come and do that course, some of that stuff over there, but.
But it more, it more and all said, it was a cost of big, it probably was a lot.
So when we got ready to get these running, the other day, James, we had this air line and some other stuff, which if we had the maintenance on, we'd have to come back. We can check into that. So go ahead and replace it and there's not even a.
They shut us down to put in a generator and everything and we got all the air in there and we had to pay them to come back and.
No, it was whenever they, it's whenever they put the unit in.
Oh, okay. So when they, okay.
So they shouldn't really charge us for that? So that's something.
I think it was six to.
But that's, they did put in a air chamber sound that we use in our tropo boxes down there, so we take relief air. We did put the water softeners on that. Or we just discussed. We just discussed and that's something we need to do and maybe by the future.
I've got money in the budget where I can move money around.
With the all's permission, I'd like to, to take, take, take the agenda out of order. I'd like to go to item number 15. I didn't realize Eric was going to come here today.
Judge, judge, don't worry. I was just taking over.
Were you anyway? Okay, then I'll just leave it there. I just thought I was going to announce that. I didn't realize you were coming, so I put it at the end. Vote on the, the new, the new boiler? Yeah, oh, yeah, we should. Are you making a motion to, to, to purchase a new boiler number three?
Replace.
Replace boiler number three. We have a second? Second from Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion will pass five zero. Let's move to item number seven, Consider the Extension Agent's November Report Request for Rembursement. Ms. Penny Baron is requesting $670.67. Ms. Savannah Williams is requesting $639.85. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion from, from Commissioner Shook. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Since we're talking about them, you want to give us a quick update on the remodel of their office?
We are getting down to the end of it. We're getting moved back in as we speak. Many blinds went back up and we've got a few little electrical issues here and there. We've got to tweak and a little bit, I think we've got one more in the men's bathroom. One commodore's ear was put in. And then it's just what we, what they can afford to doll it up like, because everything's in.
Well, Savannah, not, I'm not Savannah. Penny was telling me about it. She's pleased, very happy.
It does not look like the same building. Marsha was out there the other day. She was, got the little tour and.
It's very bad.
I mean, it doesn't look like the same building inside anymore.
Well, great. Thank you. Appreciate the report. Let's move to item number eight, Discuss and Consider Employee Bonds. Brenda K. Roberts, Juvenile Probation Administrative Assistant, $5,000. Jessica Edwards, Deputy Tax Collector, $5,000. Diana Gardner, Deputy Tax Collector, $5,000. We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number nine, Discuss the November Activity Report for the Jail and Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Babcock? Welcome.
Good morning.
You didn't win best float in the parade.
We didn't even have the float. We just.
We had a, a taxi vehicle.
She has a white cube back there.
I was gonna, the reason I brought that up was I voted for that, I was the judge for best float, so. I was, I'm who you should go into.
Yes. I'm very proud of the float. It was auto, I mean, a, a, a yard, a yard service, Craig, what was it called, Craig's?
Cody's maybe?
Co- yeah, Cody's Lawn Service.
They had the big snuggle.
It was Griswold House, I mean, there was. They could have seen those lights from space, he had so much life. Seventy-seven in the population average.
I know, it's sixty-four today. Bell County, is that a total for the month or is that what you guys tell?
They're, they're up.
Thirty-four?
They're up, they're up, we had twenty last month. Oh, days, five hundred and fourteen days, oh, the days are down, the inmates are up, but the days are down, that's interesting. Cause there are one inmate who's, who's on a parole hold, I know he, they told him he's going back, if they ever pick him up, I know we're having some medical issues with him.
No, if it's one that I'm thinking about, I came, they all had their issues.
Yeah, he's a local guy.
Yeah, well, no, they haven't figured out.
Okay. They should, taking their sweet time on.
I wear contacts on this one.
I've, I've called twice already myself.
Does that make a deal whenever they're paper ready like that, they pick them up?
Oh, it's not really because they're paper ready, they're just, they're all, they're deciding on whether to reinstate them or not.
And I think they've had hearings and stuff, they've come, they've definitely come and seen him, but they just won't make their decision.
Well, they go, so, or I'll kick him out.
I guess you do have a power.
I do, yeah.
We have any choice, uh, any comments or questions about our jail report for November? Okay. Maybe we can talk about that another time and try to figure out the game plan.
Good news on the radio, still the matter of your start to pick up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Still the matter of your start to pick up.
Oh, yeah, it's that time of year.
Man, traffic stop, so what? This might be a record traffic stop. No, no, the record looks like it's in May. May was higher, but this, that's, it's picked up from the last several months.
We got some mushrooms doing, how you say that, how you say that, that first word?
Still excited, still.
He probably sounds.
So I saw, you know, you get things on your thumb, like, you know.
Ass, do you have any idea how you get them?
I was, I was getting ass, it's in a can, it's a drink and it has micro doses of marijuana and mushrooms in it. That they're selling. Like, how is that legal? I mean, how in the world is that legal?
So I don't know, it probably is.
I saw one.
Cause you keep below a certain amount of THC in it.
I saw in some of the liquor stores, they sell marijuana drinks. And you're full of staff and with deputies, how about, how about in dispatch, are you full of staff?
No, we still, first, I think we're two down right now.
And what about in jars? Jail staff, it's good.
No, it's what I'm saying, we're training two new ones right now, so.
My intern is, um. He told me he was, that he was thinking that's where he wanted to go after college, so he, he's a good, he's a good kid, I think he'd, I think he'd like. But he, yeah, he did a rotation in there and came back, thought, whoops, I'm interested. One of them is. Uh-huh, I have.
Y'all made it to Commissioner's corner?
No, no, no.
Brian, come here.
Come on down. Yeah.
Twenty-three oh four. You know, lane mergers?
Claim on occasionally.
How you liking it so far?
So far, so good.
Great asset, for sure.
Uh, I work for Dallas PD.
Definitely a different experience that, you bring something everywhere, just.
Here happens on a Tuesday at eight AM, it's a Saturday night, so.
Yeah, that's probably true.
He's been training the other two that way, so.
He has, well. We've hired Stephanie Westbrook and Nikita from Newcastle.
Oh, she's from Newcastle?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, so, Ms. Westbrook is working to make sure that, but I'll catch you.
It's Nikita Duffield.
Get away the.
It's great to be fully staffed and.
Anyway, and, that's what I did.
Any questions for the sheriff?
Got a lot of more documents that we can add to the schedule.
Who's your K nine officer?
Richard Tellows, but we, you know, Josh, the owner was ours. And then he left, he's, since then came back. Now we've hired him.
He's working for us now?
He is.
When did he come back?
About a month or six, six months.
He's been back that long? Did not do that.
In, while he was in Lake County, he purchased his own can.
Really?
So, we might be able to use him if we wanted to, we have a memorandum that I bring to y'all and it's located. But we'll, we agree to it, we can, the same one in Lake County. But then we'll have somebody on bullshit's.
Yeah.
Sorry for the German truth, well, it's one of those, uh, good dogs, you know, Joe Shepherd's great and his is a mouth.
That's a bad dog.
Not his.
Is he?
No, his is pretty gentle.
Didn't jump out?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe he can jump.
It wasn't.
It's only if you're an Africanian though.
Oh, okay, okay.
Anyway, uh, that's it.
All right. All right, well, thank you for that.
Oh, no, we're done.
Can we do our ten o'clock bids?
We can. We're past due, aren't we? So we'll move to item fourteen, ten AM, open seal bids for road maintenance and asphalt product, products, culverts, tires, tools. And fuel. Dealer's choice.
Culverts?
Culverts, yeah.
I do, I have J and N, B and C from Culvert, did Marcia's gonna run and make copies?
Yes, yes, anyway, I'll quit eating.
I got locations all over.
Uh, on rock road materials, I have one from Stevens with the limestone. And I have one from Blackbird. Okay, Marcia, the white chocolate, I have two, it's real big, like All-Star, and one from Bow.
No.
We need to keep that up. Around on this side, it doesn't affect me at all, but.
Get housekeeping.
Walmart's a little bit of a, it's gonna be. That's a, that's a tough one. I mean, he, he had his rock.
Tell me what you want, but.
If you're trying to sell something, I'll buy it.
This is definitely a stain. Actually, if you email it, that's all you get in it, it's a letter, basically.
But if we do this, Jack County can get in?
Uh, Jack County can get in, and there was a misunderstanding in the original presentation that, that Fred had, that, um, it had to be contiguous. I think it's, it doesn't, I think it was led.
She brought up what's led.
She's one more copy.
Yes, and, and, and allow for taxes, they allow for these companies to kind of delay where they pay taxes for, for their taxes. I think it'd be a, just be a way of attracting business to say.
On a situation like this, you can get taxes from, from the product you're adding to.
Only, only when it leaves. Yeah.
Yeah, it just, it just, it's parked.
We don't have your power to invite them.
I knew I was talking ahead. So are these all, they're all bidding for the same thing?
No.
They're all bidding?
So I've got two for road material, two for fuel, and two for culverts.
Okay.
You want us to do road materials first?
Road materials? Okay, so let's see, we got, we got one from Stevens County, Loudon Stone, and we got one from, is that Zach Corkins, part of that team?
I suspect we take both fields because of the.
Are y'all still pressing?
Location with Scott recently, on someone Stevens County limestone, they paid him to buy theirs, go down all the way back. We give him an option, those are the rest of it's a dumb fact.
And Murphy is crushing Stevens County.
So, it's all.
As long as they're crushing, as long as they agree next year.
Are there any more thoughts on the road construction bids? Mr. Cresswell is making a motion to accept both bids. Agreed.
It does sound pretty very.
So I'm like, motion will accept both bids on road materials.
Let everyone finish looking at it. All right, the motion on the table is Commissioner Cresswell to accept both bids, one from Stevens County, Loudonstone, the other from Zach Parkett's company. Is there a second? There's a second, Commissioner Wiley, is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero to accept both bids. All right, what's the other one, Culvert's?
Culvert's.
There's two, two Culvert bids? Okay. Where's contact from?
Which county?
No, Urbings.
They're varying prices. What I'm talking about, they're a little bit different from J and N, well, I've got J and N, you get it right there, and we're trading low. You know, friendship.
So they can get you what you need and?
Get what we need, but.
Okay, so sixteen gauge, seven twenty-five. Oh, like, I gotta get apples to apples, so I gotta get that twelve or fourteen.
Eighteen or thirty, four days, most probably.
Thirty-six. Thirty-six?
He couldn't light up the shipping on twelve inch, sixteen gauge.
It's interesting that they're, they're higher, one's higher on one, the other's higher on the other one. Is that not the case anymore?
I'm gonna make a motion to study with J and N, their local trade, come up here for some price.
One second.
All right, we have a motion in the second to accept the J and N fee bid. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Last one for the fuel. Oh, we have two on that too, isn't it?
Yes.
Well, it's nice that we're getting bids. All right, so we've got. Now, one of these guys, I kinda agree with this.
Well, what we're looking at, one of them's giving us the price break, and one of them's just giving us a daily price.
Oh, then, we don't know.
They're offering twenty-two cents a gallon. They're totally twenty cents a gallon. Less than the daily price. Unless they're not offering a dollar, or eighteen cents off.
What else thoughts?
I think the sheriff has something to say.
So I'm understanding we're gonna vote, are we gonna consider voting for an annual?
Neither.
Is that what this is?
Yeah.
Good point.
Yeah.
Which, I'm just curious, I mean, is that gonna take away from, we won't be able to just choose who we want to, is that right?
If we did an annual bid, it's.
Yeah, anyway, I just think.
Was this set up as an annual bid? What's this?
Yes, now it is.
This is, this is, yeah, this is gonna be our fuel vendor for the next year.
That much over cost.
Which, do you have an opinion as to, do we charge about fuel drums?
Oh, I have opinions, you know, about who I've written.
This is a good time to express it.
And ultimately, we've been using Dons a lot because of the maintenance of our equipment.
Have you been happy with them?
Absolutely, I am. But, and the big, like I said, the biggest reason is, it's not because I don't like either one better than I do the other, I just like the customer service, I'm liking that when something goes wrong with our pumps, they're there to fix it. You know what I'm saying, and not if we don't have any issues with them, uh, not coming around whenever they call them.
And so if I'm reading this correct, what the Dons bid is gonna fluctuate with the margin. Whereas All Star is just setting a price.
I don't know how they can set a price, uh, two months out, let alone.
It looks to me like Dons is setting thirty-two cents over the rack price.
Yeah.
Well, it says fuel price, such a change, they have the right functions, it can't be for the right.
Which, okay, that would be.
Wait, All Star said that?
Right here in the bottom, yeah.
So they're not giving us a solid bid at all?
Well, they're, I guess there's one way to look at it, is they're giving us, their price is twenty, twenty-one cents over the, am I reading that right? If they're saying that that's, if they're using the rack price of two eleven, and they're charging two thirty-two, that's a twenty-one cent premium, am I thinking about that right? And then. Yeah, they're all at twenty-one cents.
But, once again, I'm not going to want to buy fuel, I can't either.
Keep, keep.
Well, we ran it through before when we went out to the bids, and we saw what the price happened before, so it's a mixture of that, we saw that first time.
Say it again, what?
We saw the first time it happened when we quit taking bids, and we just went with All Star, we saw what happened with the price. I don't know if we need to take that consideration or not, but then we had a question on fuel quality too.
Perhaps another question.
Yeah, there's no more, you take competition out of the equation.
Was the fuel quality, I'll explain that later to us, and I can't, something that certainly we have the board. For that.
These vehicles ever going down because of the fuel, they were initially getting.
So, the commissioners, do y'all have a preference?
All Star, on that diesel is gonna go point zero, zero, say eight, over the rack price. If that one, three tanks, one will go twenty-three cents over that price.
So one thing, now.
Also, if I remember what Sheriff was saying too, that that's what we have to do, to do this annual.
Why do they charge us tax on some and not the other? I understand the die diesel, but why does there tax on clear diesel but not on unleaded?
I'm saying it's just like, we don't have that on bad diesel, it's not even one diesel.
But you don't have it on, you've got it on, you've got it on clear diesel but not on unleaded. There should get state tax there too, right? Oh, it's just a different line, I see, okay, okay. And one of the things we're gonna talk about later, isn't being, is there's a big block of counties tax exempt on gas. What do y'all wanna do?
If I were to talk to the delivery issues we had before, some of you guys are looking at about the same thing, just by accident, I'm not trying to pick one over the other, but these are facts, and stories that we had just as fast as you're too.
I don't have the same issues as, say, Jimmy or Stacy might have, because I don't store up a lot of diesel, I've, I got two gallons, I want that one down tight, that's it. So, I don't hold fuel like someone do. That's, that's part of the issue with, to me, would be, how long you hold the fuel. Well, we don't, we don't even go two weeks without filling up. But then y'all still have issues with charge doing gasoline and not diesel. Well, we had one diesel, but it's not that much.
Y'all run out of gas about every, you refuel your tanks about every two, two weeks?
Just longer than that.
Every week.
Every week? All right.
A lot of transport loads, we get a lot more gallons, but historically, All Star's gonna start at thirty-five cents cheaper than this transport load.
All right, is there a motion, or are we punting, or are we?
Me, my opinion, I'm going out, but if, if we got two, if we got two companies that wanna bid against each other, go back to the day of the bid.
Well, that's what we're getting anyway, if you decide to take pick one and stay with them all year, takes competition out of the free year.
We just stay with the, call both companies the day needed, and it's one, I think that'd do most of the damage.
It's not that one, just everyone?
As long as both of them wanna participate, that's the issue, we have, not wanna participate that way, and I do prefer, if I need something done to my dealer, I need depth, I, I, only fuel is a whole lot easier to deal with. And it makes, I understand what Sheriff's Department's coming on getting service work done, because All Star doesn't come out if your pump's not running right, or you're needing something fixed, they're not gonna come fix it.
We have a can of pump, so it's up to us.
It's up to us, yeah, but I'm not a pump mechanic, I can tell you that, not on a fuel pump.
I'm just here to go buy new ones.
Well, the last one I bought wasn't real cheap, so if I can fix it, I'm going to. I look at it like this, we're not experts in fixing and repairing fuel tanks, and I'm not gonna put my guys up there doing that, for safety issues.
All right, is there a motion on the fuel bid? If not, is it gonna die for lack of emotion?
Can we accept both? Like Stacy's saying, but then make a choice, who, who, who you wanna use, like, if there's a reason why you don't wanna use them, you need to put it on your receipts.
We could, I wonder why we couldn't accept both?
You did on the rock.
You did on the rock, I mean, we have a motion to accept both?
I'm gonna get a motion.
All right, Commissioner Cresswell's made a motion to accept both bids, do we have a second? Do we have a second for Commissioner Shook, is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes three, one, one, Commissioner Rogers against, Commissioner Wiley abstaining. Okay? Yes.
When you do shoot them over fifty.
Oh, yes.
Make me get her name right, just.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Welcome aboard.
Yes, sir.
So nice to meet you.
Good, how are you?
Where'd you come from?
Uh, Lake County.
Lake County?
Yes, sir.
What do you think of Young County so far?
I like it, people are great.
Well, you think of our criminals.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, they're still criminals.
They're still criminals? They're the same?
Yep, they are the same.
Okay.
Well, the chances of wearing alleyards on the ski bench.
Yeah. Oh, we're sure glad to have you on board.
Thank you for having me.
All right, anybody else have any questions for, come on, y'all be easy on them.
Hey, you give another trouble.
What has been the biggest challenge of Young County, besides your sheriff?
Um, the streets, there's no signs on the streets, and somebody coming in, it's hard to like, if they're for it, but like, you know, trying to figure out the geography and stuff like that.
New Castle?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, just having the street signs actually on the stop signs and stuff like that.
Do you know how long it takes for one of those signs, that you put it up, they go off?
Probably not very long.
Depends on which road, then what kids live on.
Yeah, so I just have GPS and figuring out.
Well, precinct two, I'm gonna pick up a whole load of signs, just a minute, so we're working, and we're in our part of the county.
That's why precincts two is the best.
Thank you, Young County, great again.
And that's good.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much.
I think if Scott's enthused about this, we should give him law stroke, see how long he keeps signs on that thing. I've had it, Jimmy's had it, you oughta keep it for a while.
We don't know how many people will be law.
They like taking that time.
All right, we're gonna invite Tom Parker to come up again, we're gonna look at item number ten, discuss and consider a foreign trade zone. Explain to us what a foreign trade zone is.
I would tip to. Let me tell you how we got here, and then I'll tell you what this is. Foreign trade zone was discussed at a Texas Economic Development Council meeting back in October, and this, this comes out of the request out of Abilene. And Abilene CDC group had been looking at creating a footprint in what we'll call central Texas. We don't have any ports, we have limited rail, we do have a pretty good industry, interstate structure that allows us, and with some of the work being done on building roads in Young County, and our proximity to them, I thought it would be a pretty good idea. We were actually excluded from the original, um, footprint. They contracted with Ernst and Young to go through and look at what, what might make a good footprint for this port. Rather than saying, nah, we shouldn't be there, I was like, why, why can't, we're, we're pretty close, we're, we're in, we, but, Palafano County, and through this conversation that came out of discussions with a small group that I'm part of, this is gonna reach all the way to Jack County and out to Wise County, by the time we're done with this. Foreign trade zone basically is a place where materials can travel in and out of the coun, of the country, and taxes and duties are bated until it moves. And taxes and duties are bated until it moves in either direction, depending on which way it's coming. It does not remove taxes necessarily, it abates them until the work is completed and goes out. Some situations can be a complete tax wash where there is no, there is no tax paid. A manufacturer, this is typically manufacturing, a manufacturer that would want to use this type of thing doesn't need this, the county's involvement or any government involvement other than the federal government when this all, when this all takes place. They can apply on their own and they, this can be put in place on, on an ad hoc basis. What this is, is a request from the county, to the county, for participation in a zone, not necessarily that it's gonna, it doesn't cost anything to be a member. Doesn't cost anything to the county to participate in any of the, the work that takes place by this, by this board, by this group out of Abilene. We are simply saying, hey, we're here and we're open for business. That Commissioner Shook, I commented just a few minutes ago, it's to make all, it's to make Young County great again. It's one of those things that we're, we just get on a map and we are, they're gonna be discovered and hopefully utilized in, in manufacturing.
What it's really gonna be is a tool for Tom D. and Alme, for the group over there to use here in Graham. When they're trying to attract businesses to our community, it's just another tool to say, you know, yeah, something you're gonna get in Dallas, Fort Worth, Abilene, you can also get that here. And it, it shouldn't affect the taxes we collect, it would affect the timing that we would collect the taxes. Cause they can have it come in and kinda sit with the taxes being delayed for a period of time. And then when they decide to move it out, and I don't believe, I don't, I don't, I, we would, if they moved it from a foreign tact trade zone in Young County into a foreign trade co- tax zone in Stevens County. We wouldn't collect it. It's till it leaves this whole area.
Till it leaves a, a non, a tax-free area till it goes out.
So it could result in-
Till it's blocked.
Yeah.
Is this product available, manufactured in the scanner, can it be brought in somewhere else to store?
There has to be work completed. I'll, I'll, I'll do this personal experience, thirty-five years ago, I worked for a company that, that had this. You can, here's an example that, that they had, they bought ingot and bought product, came from Mexico, came into our facility. Machining work, it went into a whip area, a separate inventory process area. In that, in that area, it's held, no, no taxes and duties are paid at that point.
That's not a finished product.
It's not a finished product, it's a raw, it's a, it can go all the way up to semi. Go ahead.
So it does away with your animal warm on?
It can, yes, it can.
And so you'd wind up losing animal warm tax in the county immediately.
It doesn't, you wouldn't get it, would, if, if they apply for it themselves, you don't get it anyway. The county's participation in it, they go get this at the, at the federal level and come in and say, this is gonna be a tax-free zone. Here, it's a tax-free zone, works its way down, and they'll, they'll petition you. So yes, you can, you can lose that before. It's no different than a five oh one three, five oh one, or, I'm sorry, five oh eight, it's, it's not any different than abating for any other type of, of incentive for industry to go.
Now, working in a machine shop before, you've paid your animal warm on your stock.
Yes, sir.
Then that would eliminate that immediately if you're buying foreign products, bringing it in, setting it up and saying it's not taxable till it's a finished product. There is no animal warm.
Until it ships.
Till it shipped.
Correct.
But it shifts for a reason, you're gonna get taxed.
Depends on who costs.
Basically, we would, if we did this, we're doing this to help our communities bring in new companies, new jobs. Maybe Air Tractor, Tower, Southern Bleachers, maybe they could take advantage of it and then that, that might affect us a little bit on taxes that are gonna be generated. But the carrot is, this is a tool to help us try to earn new jobs into our county.
But the building, if you're gonna restore this stuff.
It's still ass.
It's gonna be back.
Oh, absolutely.
So what's not, the only time you're not, you have a possibility of not being taxed on it is what's the car.
I'll, I'll give you the examples that I worked with specifically, two of the people that, that just, just mentioned. When I went to Air Tractor, it, I looked at it from a standpoint of the, the engines that they buy from practically. The current, we don't give them that anyway because it goes, they keep it in a warehouse in Canada, cause it's trapped within Canada, but then it comes, does come here. When it comes here, it stays working process, goes on a plane, sixty percent or more of those planes, if those engines go in, are going to Brazil or some other foreign country, we don't get it anyway. So the few that are there, we still get, but we don't, it stays in Canada, never comes here. So from a, from, they've already worked around it, they probably do not use this. Tower, on the other hand, by billet and that kinda thing.
It will be a big drop in there for taxes.
The, the amount of billet that they use that comes from a foreign entity is incrementally not there and they're not going, they, they, at this point, they said they're not going to.
More paperwork than it's worth.
More paperwork than it's worth. What this, what this requires you to do is to say, this piece is only gonna sit here until I'm done with it and that's it. If you're running a machine shop, you understand that that model needs to leave, what we're doing is we're generating hours, we're only getting paid on hours. So the material is inconsequential, the paperwork that that takes to actually do that is gotta be, it's, it's exorbitant compared to what, what you could potentially do. This is a manufacturer like a GM, this is a foreign, now they don't manufacture, what a Subaru GM, those types of things. From a truly logistic standpoint, I don't know that we actually ever use this, I don't, we don't have the, we don't have rail enough that, that you could, that you could get a guy like that to come in here. This is merely another box being checked for, yes, we understand what the industry is and yes, if you're here, we'd like to, we'd like to talk to you about any business here.
A lot of times the state of Texas will give these, yeah, opportunities where companies wanna move the taxes. And they'll then send it out to the counties and the cities to say, you know, who wants to, to make an offer to try to attract this company in. This will be a box. We can check and say, yeah, we've got this.
We, here, to your same point, that's, and then yours is an exact example of what this is about. So from a manufacturing standpoint, it's in and out, if I'm gonna ship it in, I've got cost to ship it, if I'm gonna ship it out, I've got cost to ship it. Logistically, where we are, hell, it's not gonna happen a whole lot, just because of the weight of everything they've got. I've looked at a number of different companies to try to bring them the air down, specifically Alme, but it, logistically, it doesn't work at this particular point. This is building, this is getting us on a list, we becomes, we become, become part of the, whatever they, they're calling it now, it's a, it's a mid-state port authority. We're just, we're tagging on wherever they are.
Yeah, you know, you can hold goods for over a year process, so you don't pay taxes in one year that you're doing the next.
In the next.
And it's, it's a, it's a plus at times, but it also can make you.
It can cost you more money?
It can cost you more, or they can be waiting for it to cost less.
Then they can, and that, that's a game, that's a futures game, that, that's exactly what that is. But it's, it's the cost of that material that's sitting there. And in, and with, just in time manufacturing, the way that most of that is working at this point, is not a lot that can be applied anymore. I'm sorry?
Can't they get you on free port tags on top of this, or do you get a exemption from our county, which is still, you're on federal free port tags?
You can, yes, sir.
This is something we looked at for, had a resolution, thirty years ago. The Fed was coming up with when they started building these big storage warehouses. And that was the whole point, they're giving them the funds to be able to, they could do it for you.
You can figure out, I hear.
Yes.
You kinda look, these, these zones are all up and down, I thirty-five, I forty-five, I ten, all along the Gulf Coast, the ports.
This is the center of the state, basically along I twenty. I could try and pull in some of the other ones with the fingers feeding that, just to see if we could, we could participate, looking more regional.
Midland, Lubbock, Camarilla, they've already done it.
They've already done it.
I mean, all the big cities have done it.
Yeah, if you go to Arlington, if you have six, three sixty in Arlington, you see those train, trains full of cars, that's this. It's not whole, I, I don't, I would love that, well, I would love it. I would like something like that from a monetary standpoint, be in Arlington or in Young County, but it's.
Million dollars a mile is all it takes to get rail.
That's all it takes.
Jack and you.
You're priced it for me.
And Jack, Jack is looking at it, in fact, I was, I was gonna have this group to, a Zoom call with y'all, but Jack's actually having that done with them this morning at their commissioner's court. So they're, they're investigating, I haven't taken it to Wichita, I, I'm running out of time. We, that's the other thing, th- this letter needs to be on their desks between the tenth and the fifteenth of January. So I give you, take a look at it, you want, what time to think about it, we don't have to do it till then, but I mean.
I don't see the cost side of this, I, 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 to me, this.
Unexistent.
Odds are, we're not gonna get anything from this, but it is a tool that we could use to maybe get someone to come to somewhere in our county, any business.
The, the two things that we have specifically in Young County that I, I think are gonna help us is we have, we have labor, people say we don't have labor, we have labor. And we have airports, and the two areas that I'm, I'm really looking at, you guys have already seen what's going on at your airport, and that's gonna get better and ours is getting better. It's, we don't have, we're working on roads, Techstar can help us, we can, we can help with that, but we're gonna have to do something. If we could find a high-value manufacturer, aerospace kinda thing, that could locate a facility and could fly parts in and out because they're for, like sets, that'd be awesome. I mean, we've never did it.
So we need to do this.
Actually looking at, it's becoming a spaceport, but we're too far, we've got too much white noise, white, white light.
I'm gonna make a motion that the commissioner's court writes a letter in support of Young County being included in the development corporation of Abilene's foreign trade zone service area.
Oh, sir.
With the second, I, I made a motion, Commissioner Cresswell has made a second, is there anyone who'd like to make a comment or discuss this in any further?
We need to do the shuffle, the current letter?
Yeah, and it'll come out of my office, the letter comes out and will come out here, but I need, I think we should all agree. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. I'll put this letter together and I'll send you my letter once I go to execute it, and you should get included.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You bet.
Does the city have to mail this?
No, it's a county-wide, it's at a county level, it starts federal, goes to state, then county, city really doesn't. The taxing entities don't have a voice, but this letter comes out at the county level, that's the, that's the granular level for this, I'm sorry, mediation. Good question.
Okay, the next item, this is my, item number eleven, discuss and consider a resolution of support for the county motor fuel tax exemption. I'll read this resolution, but just a little bit of background. There is a movement for the counties in this next legislative session to ask to be exempt from having to pay taxes on fuel. Right now, for example, schools, schools are exempt, so a school district doesn't have to pay tax, tax on fuel, but we do. And, can you close that door? And so, pretty much all the counties are passing this resolution because primarily, it doesn't make sense to tax the citizens for paying a tax. So, the resolution reads as this, resolution of support for county motor fuel tax exemption, resolution number one fifteen, fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Whereas Texas counties are the action arm of the state government and are responsible for the operation and management of many various state government programs as required or authorized by state law. And whereas Texas counties provide the essential state services to constituents at the local level, which are fully or partially supported with funds dispersed by the state of Texas pursuant to the state appropriations process. And whereas Texas counties provide emergency management services to the citizens of the state of Texas and serve as first responders during disasters to clear roads and provide life-saving rescue and recovery support to local, regional, state, and federal agencies. And whereas the rising cost, rising cost, fuel costs have a significant impact on the county budget. And whereas the state of Texas has authorized a motor fuel tax exemption for volunteer fire departments, which partner with the Texas counties to provide life-saving fire response and mitigation to citizens of Texas. And whereas the state of Texas has authorized a motor fuel tax exemption to the Texas public schools for motor fuel, fuel taxes, which helps reduce expenses to local school districts and alleviate the impact of local school property taxes to the citizens of Texas. And whereas exempting Texas motor fuel taxes for Texas counties will reduce tax churn in the state and further alleviate the impact of local county property taxes to the state of Texas. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Young County Commissioners Court does hereby resolve that for the foregoing reasons, it is in the best interest of Texas counties and their taxpayers to support and favor passage of legislation that exempts counties from certain motor fuels taxes. Approved and adopted by the Young County Commissioners Court on this day.
That one not only do diesel, but also do gasoline too.
Yeah, I didn't think it's all fuel. Most, I mean, so far, I have not heard of a county not doing this resolution. It's one of these things, they're gonna package all these up and they're gonna go to Austin and they're gonna lobby, lobby for this and, and hopefully the legislature will, will, will consider this. But I'm making a motion that we do a county resolution in support of a county motor fuel tax exemption.
Second.
Alright, I made a motion, Commissioner Cresswell has made a second, is there any discussion?
This wouldn't be a conflict of interest.
I don't think so. I don't think so. This is more just a, yeah, I, I, I don't think this is conflict of interest. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. It's not a motion, it's not a conflict of interest, cause y'all don't make money off the taxes. Y'all, y'all, you're just a pass-through entity.
We just, we just, in usually, have to buy tax passes, we'll provide, but we have to send it to state to get a refund.
Item number twelve, discuss and consider an application permit across the county road to construct a pipeline or utility. Commissioner Cresswell?
It's in the area of Dark Canyon, it's all dirt road right through there, they're gonna do a road cut. And I don't see why I'm gonna make a motion to go ahead and accept the permit. I didn't see the front page of it.
What is, this doesn't have anything to do with?
Yeah, it does, it's in behind it.
It says Teresa Road.
Teresa Drive or half of Dark Canyon.
Okay.
I, I didn't do it, they come in and brought it in another day.
Okay, are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion that we're.
Commissioner Cresswell's made a motion, we have a second, second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We'll move to item number thirteen, ratify the commercial trailer lease agreement, agreement contract for a twenty twenty-five Razz's forty-foot pit loss. Commissioner Wiley?
This is an exhaust tube, you can get, use another trailer, for three thousand dollars, you can use it for six months. When it's up, I'll take you back down, get you another, you wanna do another six months.
I think they approved it on the last commissioner, that we just didn't have the contract.
Didn't have the contract.
Gotcha, so this is, this is to sign the contract, we're ratifying the contract. You're making a motion, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Alright, item number fifteen, update on the county fire truck to be used by the Graham Fire Department to respond to emergencies in the county. Eric Garrity gave, gave us a report on our fire truck, you wanna, you wanna, you wanna update the commissioner's court on the fire truck?
You got it there, just, I heard from the vendor that there were some material delays that are preventing files into the truck, I hoped that it would be a Christmas truck. They're saying January, when I hear what they're. They're saying January, when I hear what they're saying, it's probably gonna look more like February before we get here, but I just didn't want you, hey, you told us Eric it was supposed to be December, and they're just saying material delays, and I think it's probably gonna be February before we see the truck.
Just like Deion Sanders said, I'm coming. The truck is coming.
I did. I'm providing the judge with some data, I get a news feed in there, another could just probably buy a similar truck. Not, a little bit, a little bit more capable than what we got, but pretty close to it, and they pay a million plus. The things aren't getting any cheaper, and I make the point to judge, we got, we got competitive pricing for, I think, the truck a little bit. And then the final thing while we're on county fire, Judge, and I just wanted to mention, after we get through Christmas legislation, season is kicking off, right? All these issues about county fire, Representative Spiller did get a resolution that county passed about doing the study on rural fire departments. I know you're all busy, but if you get a chance, please reach out to your legislatures about supporting the multiple initiatives, not only on this one, but also the angle of service.
Yes.
They need to hear from you, and I think it makes a difference. We really need to make a push on approving our rural fire.
I think Park Bureau's got a big push for rural, and it's, I'd give it.
Do you think they'll hit me with it?
Good.
They think they wanna do something, then, like, simple, little, twenty-two, I mean, for, for...
That's what I'm hearing.
James Frank Office, I think they're, I think he's gonna champion that, at least, he's, or one of the people that's kinda leading that charge.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Eric. No action on that, it's just nothing. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider burn restrictions. Are we still happy being...
No action.
Not in front of him? No action? Would you, would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
No, we're gonna stay here for a while.
We have, we have, we have doughnuts. We're gonna stay here as long as Stacy doesn't stay here for his last meeting.
Got no work to do.
Well, good. I don't either. I don't either. I blocked off the whole day for this.
Oh, it's good. Motion.
I'll second.
Stacy Rogers has made a motion to adjourn his final commercials court meeting. We have a second from Commissioner Shook. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. This one, yours?
Okay. This is your fifty-dollar thing. Deal with the airport. Yeah, what are you showing me?
Oh, you gotta be, kinda, private individual that's looking at, uh, so, roughly a thousand, and, 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 and...
Good luck.
And, 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 paying, and additional services to air factories.
Do you have this in a word program? Yeah, that way I, I'll have a typo if I do it.
It, it actually may be in that email.
I said, I didn't, when did you send the email? I looked for it on Friday, I never saw, I never saw it. It may, it may be there, and I just missed it.
It's from a woman from this.
Oh.
I'll just forward that, I'll, I'll...
I never saw it.
Uh-huh. I did not watch it, did we miss?
I had a hole out where it went for bad. Yes, it was sickening. Yeah, we were, we were up, and then we knocked the quarterback out, and I was like, goodness, their new quarterback came in, and they all of a sudden started whipping up and down the field. We missed all these field goals, and then, and then the ball, and then it just came all the way to our field. Had several chances to get a touchdown, didn't get it, kicked field goal, got in overtime, kicked field...